Chairman Smith.
Here.
Chairman Garner.
Here.
Mayor Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Chambers.
Here.
Chief Johnson.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Mr. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
The first on our agenda is the preservation of Project Prattble 2040. We have been told to ask for a plan. Scott, what you got?
Good evening, everyone. That's why I said. So for everyone, everyone knows we are here in the Council of Chalmers at Prattble City Hall. We're also getting into this via Zoom. Control and just feedback on this laptop. All right, so again, welcome everybody. This is the light end of the tunnel, the long process, a very good process for the conference plan. Like I said, we're on Zoom as well. It should be picking up the audio pretty well, especially right here at the left turn with the microphone. I would ask all the commissioners just to use your microphone, please. But maybe speak a little bit like you say, we're hoping for all the participants to be at Zoom to be able to hear and participate. When once I'll have a short introduction, Jason will have a presentation. Plan Commission, the questions they have that will move it. We'll certainly allow both participants here in person and on Zoom. On Zoom, those who are listening, if you utilize the raise your hand function or the chat function, I'll do my best to pay attention to that when I sit back down and we'll make sure everyone has a chance on Zoom to participate or ask questions or speak if they want to. I was gonna start with just introductions for everyone who's in and at home. Those of the private planning commission, so our chairman is Mr. Tim Smith. Our vice chairman is Mr. Ruben Garner. With this Carter here, John Chambers, who's a councilman, he also serves on the commission. Mr. Ken Daniel, Mayor Gillespie, who serves on the commission. Mr. Seth Hayden, not here tonight, but I know they're working on joining us via Zoom. We're Mr. Dallas, or Chief Dallas Johnson and Bugs Bones. Also Melissa Lee Curtis, former councilman, who was on the planning commission when this process started. And Martin Jackson, who was on the planning commission when the process started. I also wanted to recognize the mayor of the council, of course, Mayor Gillespie's here. Councilman, Councilor Chambers is here, but also Council President, Chair of the Stalkers. President Pro Tim Lorley Boone, Larry Gorto, Marcus Jackson, Robert Strickland, and Howard Strickland. Then Councilman Strickland's back here. It's Boon's back here, so we have a few of the local officials here. So what do we hear more tonight? What's, what is a comprehensive plan? I want to start with the legal basis of why do we do it? How can we do it? The Alabama Code allows all cities to form a planning commission. Prattble formed their planning commission in 1953. The very first meeting was in January of 1954, so approaching 70 years the city of Prattble has had a planning commission. Code 1152-8 says it shall be the function. Our city attorney back here will tell you the shall is an important word. It's not a may, it's not if you want to. It's that it shall be the function and be the other planning commissions. Maybe adopt the master plan for physical development. So tonight you are doing one of those requirements of a planning. What, what is the kind of plan given? The code calls the master plan. We've kind of been going on topics flat many years, same thing. It's a, it's plan that has a general purpose of guiding accomplishment. And like I said, coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the city. It's about to help save general welfare of the city as well as efficiency and economy in process of development. Before the adoption of the planning commission shall hold at least one public hearing. So again, we're here to notice this prior to consideration of adoption. And just so everyone knows, the planning also has to adopt the plan by at least six affirmative measures. So, so now it's a legal basis. That's, that's what the state code tells us we have to do. So again, it's a, it's a shall function. But in more general terms, it's a policy document. It, it puts forth the values, the goals, the vision of the city. And we'll talk a little bit more, but the, there's been a number of community meetings and surveys and public groups that the planning commission has, has received feedback from various people throughout the community. It's a guide for making decisions. So when at least something will let me set up sets, send in rather, resume requests. Somebody turns in a resume application to this, to the planning department. The planners, we look at that request and then our first stop is to pull up the conference plan. Future land use plan and see what, what does the community think belongs in this area. So that's kind of our guide when we, we make recommendations, recommendations to the planning mission about future stumbling changes or anything. It's a, it's a long range timeline. The title of the conference plan is Project Prattble 2040. It's about a 20, if not even beyond that 20 year horizon that we look at for the development of the city. I also wanted to acknowledge all the people who participated in this plan. First and foremost, the citizens, the partners of Prattble, if you will. This is adopted for the citizens. We relied on public meetings and advisory committee, the planning commission, the city council, our local officials to provide feedback to put this document together. The planning commission, of course, the mayor of the council. There was an advisory committee. I, I will quickly name everyone here, just because they, they put so much time. And I'll try to tell you if they are what they do. But Robbie Anderson's the city engineer, it's Bainbridge, County Bainbridge, works for the electric co-op, the government. Chief, Fire Chief Terry Brown. John Brown is a local developer. He's done some of the subdivisions in town and other general contracting work. Buddy Buckner's the director of the water authority. Lisa Bird is the mayor's executive assistant. Caleb Coe is the parcel recreation director of the city. Mr. Jeremy Crosby is our board of zoning adjustment, chairman. Mr. Richard Dennis is the superintendent of the Elmore County School System. Great dude, time it was not, but his subsequent sentence been a member of the adjustment. They're also the local religious order. Dale Gandy is our public works director. Mr. Ruben Garner is a local contractor and member of the planning commission. Mayor Bill Gillespie. Skip Jones is a local home builder. Lee Lightly was the chair of the historical preservation commission. Jenny Leatherwood's an active citizen, as is Teresa Lee. David Lewis, he's the director of YPC and a member of the industrial development. Jim Anderson's a member of the Autoka County Board of Education. Mr. Aaron Morgan is the CEO of Baptist Health of the local hospital here. Bugs Bones is a local real estate agent and a member of the planning mission. Bradley Lee is the current chair of the store Prattble redevelopment authority. Tom Lee was the former chair of the store Prattble redevelopment authority. Darrell Reese is a member of the planning department staff. Mr. Skip Cole, Tim, Tim Smith is the chair of the planning commission. Cole Segura and Eric Strickland, that is two, I'm gonna kind of call them out there. They're students reflectively at Prattble Christian Academy and Prattble High School. They're seniors now, they started as juniors when this process started. I thought it was important, I think it was a good idea to get some younger people on the, juggling halfway, juggling, kind of telling some folks that if young people don't get involved in this process, it will, it will only what the old people want. So it was, it was, they provided a lot of valuable feedback, but it was great to have those guys on. Alex Strickland was, he still is a council member, but he was the president of the council at the time. Police Chief Mark Thompson, Patrick White's an active citizen, and Tommy Witt is a member of the planning. So I'm planning department staff. Hopefully my memory did fell behind on these. I said, they, these people provide a lot of input, I just want to give their names out there. Some of the additional contributors, part of the process, we interviewed some individuals or groups of people from various organizations or associations. So again, I'll quickly name these, the Autoka County Board of Education, the Autoka County Heritage Association, the Autoka Creek Improvement Committee, Elmore County Board of Education. HPRA, the store Prattble redevelopment authority, the Prattble Area Chamber of Conference. Fire Department, the store preservation commission, the housing authority, parcel recreation department, the police department, waterworks board, and Prattble lines. City project team, which was kind of the more of the day to day contact with the city. Robbie Anderson, our city engineer, Lisa Bird, the mayor's executive assistant, Dale Gandy, the public works director, and myself. And then the planning department, some of them were really behind the scenes, but they did a lot of work. Tolerated, they didn't have the awful slots to do some of these jobs. Shelby, Lisa Leslie, Errol, Sheldon. And last but not least, with Jamie Sutton, we do want to especially acknowledge her. She is the city's webmaster. She created the website projectprattble.com, which looks so good. She did graphic design, she, she created the logo, the project product logo. She made the postcard that hopefully everyone saw go out. She did a social media post, so she, she did a lot of the work that certain wanted to accomplish. So a little bit of the timeline, again, I said the planning commission's found was formed in 1953, and they shall create a comprehensive planning in the city going back a few years. In February of 1996, planning Prattble into the 21st century was adopted. A few years later, 14 years later, Project Prattble, the next chapter was adopted by the planning. And hopefully soon, Project Prattble 2040 will be adopted. It, it's, it's good that we, we look at a 20 or 30 year horizon for these plans, but it's, it's very good practice to five, seven, 10 years to consider reevaluating, updating, or just adopting. So we're right on schedule. In February 2020, well, I did want to back up a little bit. So I've been here a little for two years in my position here with the city of Prattble. And probably in spring or summer of 2019, I was talking to the mayor about my department's budget, you know, what, what, what we're thinking, what we're, what was coming up. And I mentioned to him, I said, well, I think, you know, the conference plan is sort of something that's, you know, it's, like I said, five, seven, 10 years, you want to start looking at it. And he said, well, put in the budget request, do it. Well, so, so thank you Mayor Gillespie for totally putting that in budget. And thank you to the council for appreciating that. So in February 2020, the council authorized an agreement to form with the KPS group to start this process of the conference plan and actually the second one. I think we all know what happened in March 2020. So our timeline, we, we estimate about 12 on the timeline for the whole process. Even despite all the challenges that happened with the pandemic, we really utilized Zoom and other technology, online survey, it's public, public, social media, to really get the word out there and receive feedback. So we really stay on task. But that's it. Next up, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jason Potter with KPS group, that he was the link consultant on this project. He'll walk us through where we, where we went after February 2020.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening, everybody's doing well. And good evening, everybody who is joining us on Zoom. Just want to give a recap of the planning process as well as the outcome of that process, the conference plan, which we are putting for you tonight. When we begin, whenever we, we enter into a planning process with a community, we think it's really important that everybody is involved and it's sort of equal billing. Both the, the staff folks who work with us regularly, as Scott mentioned, the advisory committee, who we checked in with every month or two to, to make sure that we were moving, you know, things were moving in the right direction. All the residents and property owners who could join in the community meetings, the elected officials and staff and appointed officials as well, planning commission, and the, the consulting team. We all kind of worked together, put this, put, put this plan together. We like to think of ourselves as facilitators in the process and a lot of the, a lot of the product really came from you. So the process, we, we began officially around May of last year after we, we were contracted in February. We had our due diligence period and because of the pandemic, we kind of waited a little bit to, to get started with the community engagement. The first thing that we did was release a survey. We ended up releasing three surveys throughout the process. And held our first visioning session at the Doster Center in June. We ended up having a, a total of four workshops with the community. All of those were held at the Doster Center. We had a meeting hosted by the business roundtable hosted by the chamber during the summer as well. And we had the joint work session back in the fall with, with the planning commission and members of the council as well as the open house here in, in December. And so now we, we've got the, the plan finished up or drafted. And we're sort of in the final part of that review period, hoping to get an affirmative vote from, from the planning commission as we move forward with this. So in engaging the community, one of the first things we did, of course, was that survey. Just some of the, a quick recap before we heard from that first survey, what people were really concerned about. Schools, public safety, business development, downtown, industrial development, workforce development, parcel recreation, utilities, infrastructure, community image, neighborhood revitalization, parks and cultural amenities, sort of in, you know, those, those top several were also reiterated. And the final question of the survey was what one thing would have the most positive long term impact on the city of Prattble? If you, you know, if you could go, if you could go make this one change, what would it be that you think would have the biggest positive impact? And this graphic represents the, the responses that we got. The larger, the, the actual words appear on the screen, the more responses we got associated with that. So schools reported, business, downtown, parcel recreation, sports, filling up empty stores, traffic. All of those were, were reaffirmed in that last question. And your divisioning session at the Doster Center, we asked similar questions than were on the survey, but with a little, a little bit of a twist. One of the things that we asked was, when you think about how you see Prattble 20 years from now, your vision of the way Prattble ought to change or, or improve, what, what is kind of the difference between now and then? What's the thing that's not the case today that you want to see be the case in 20 years from now? And some of the responses there were development around the exit 186, US 31, and I-65, or industrial growth, job growth, High Point being fully occupied. There'd be more partnerships within the community. And reuse of the gin shop, which is kind of been, been something that's been on the slate for a while now. We're starting to finally see some of that being implemented now, which is really exciting. More entertainment options, particularly for the youth. An interpretive center, more museum, quality schools, and development guidelines to manage the continued growth of Prattble. To give a sense of what was, when people talked about their vision, what's they seeing or what they'd like to see change, we wanted to get a sense of what's really the most important thing from, from everyone. So we asked, what would really impress you the most? Walk outside right now, and it's 20 years. What would, what would you look at and see that would, you know, make your jaw drop? Say, wow, I can't believe that they have it so important we did this. And folks had a, had a range of responses to that. Strong leadership, a, a good vision that the community is, is working together behind. A city school system, the interpretive center, control development, some type of auditorium or civic center, some type of very large meeting venue. And then somewhat remarkable, you know, had obviously put a lot of thought into this, the central Alabama leader in economic and industrial growth that focuses on family and community. The next step of the planning process was, as we moved through the visioning, which was what, that, that, that part of the process built up around the visioning section in the first survey, we began to take all of that input and start to put together some goals for, for the next 20 years. And it identified five key areas based on survey responses in the input from the visioning session. The first being education, making sure that you have good quality schools that are, that are well funded. And that there's an emphasis on pre-K programs and workforce training for high school and adult students, that the community supports growth of, or community college. And over time, to seriously evaluate the creation of a high grade city school system or some type of city county hybrid school system. The next big goal category was the economy of the city. And the recommendations in there were to continue to grow your industrial, industrial base, because that helps to expand those job opportunities that people said they wanted to see in Prattble. Continue working on downtown Prattble. Been very successful over the last 20 years. There's still work to be done, but I think you see the fruits of the efforts that have been made and see the additional potential that you have. Recruit and grow businesses to fill up those empty spaces at High Point and other parts, parts of the city. To develop a comprehensive strategy for developing tourism for Prattble, because you have so many, there are so many different facets in Prattble that would be interesting to visitors. Whether that is ecological or outdoor tourism, your, your historic sites and amenities, spores and, and other unique aspects of Prattble. And then to grow activities and businesses that will have a synergy with tourism, whether that's, that's lodging, dining, entertainment, things that are going to, you know, tap the, the revenue potential that you can get from additional tourism. Recreation and culture was the third major goal category. And the thing that we heard throughout the meetings was an interest in a civic center or some type of multipurpose facility that could house not only large gatherings such as school graduations, but big events could include performance space. Some of, some of the arts needs that were, were talked about in the community meetings and the, some previous studies that the city had done. This facility might, might solidate some of those space needs that are seen, whether that's the library, performing creative arts center. To build a recreational trail network throughout the city, taking advantage of some of your street corridors to create some major spines for a recreational trail network. And to build additional parks and open spaces as the city grows in population. Infrastructure, of course, a thing that helps make all of this stuff work. Improving traffic flow in your major streets, that was continuing to be an issue. Improving east-west connectivity on the north side of town, discouraging through traffic in neighborhoods. Making sure that all neighborhoods and business areas have good internet service and ensuring long term water supply quality. And planning for the development of additional on and off road bicycle pedestrians facilities, which goes in, kind of works in tandem with creating that trail network. And the, the fifth one we refer to as enhancement, it included making, putting together some strategies to reduce vacancy or increase reinvestment in older business areas and neighborhoods such as the track lot area. Continuing code enforcement programs to reduce blind, encouraging preservation maintenance in your historic areas, maintaining and improving your gateways and your image corridors, which are the major roads that people travel or visiting in particular, but also everybody who, who lives and works in Prattble. Much of your impression of the city is based on what you see on your daily travels. And most of those daily travels are going to be on a few key roadways. So for the city to invest in the image of those roadways and to work with the private sector to assure that development along those presents a good image will be a strategic way to have a, reflecting a very strong quality image to visitors, but also to residents and folks who work in Prattble as well. And then developing a wayfinding system to be able to help people navigate, people who are on the road with community visitors, to navigate the city, find unique destinations such as maybe that future multipurpose civic center or downtown Prattble or, or any of your, your parks or other key destinations. The third part of the planning process was putting together a growth strategy, which was a very high level view of the, the city as it is and taking the pattern that has been established over time, just a combination of your infrastructure, your road network, and your natural environment. Those forces create a certain pattern that you have to live with and grow from. And this, the growth strategy reflected that and showed how it would extend out over time and dealt with issues such as community image, which I mentioned, or image corridors and gateways a moment ago. Activities centers, and one of these has a set of principles that go along with that. Things to pay attention to as you're making decisions about whether it's zoning or road improvements or, or other similar decisions will be activated over the years. Activity center principles include concentrating businesses and industrial activities into hubs and, and limit the amount that they are distributed linearly along roads. Sort of see how that has changed the character of the community, the way that development has occurred along Main Street and Cops Ford Road. Some of that is very good, but there are certain negative aspects to that. Traffic in particular, which we all know and was commented on. Supporting business, intensive business activity where you have a strong street network, not, not depending on one artery for most trips. Enabling the development of some smaller scale and able to handle activity centers for business areas. Infrastructure, again, one of those goal areas, this is also part of the growth strategy. Making sure that you're coordinating development with the capacity of your infrastructure and that infrastructure improvements are being done or being directed to areas where it is, there's a mutual bit of that potential for development or in, in reinvestment in existing neighborhoods and business areas. And in optimizing your telecommunications infrastructure such as internet service throughout the community. Green infrastructure, like, other types like, like what we call gray infrastructure. Green infrastructure is very, very important as well. It has shaped the way that the communities develop. They have to be sensitive to it and to avoid development or maybe the design of development that is going to have negative impacts on the natural environment. Taking advantage of the natural environment to, to do its work. Supporting those, those storm, stormwater drainage and water quality functions that it, it does provide as well as potential for recreation in tourism. And Prattble really has a, a unique natural environment, green infrastructure network that is very much based on its waterways. that is very much based on its waterways, the creeks and streams and how they connect up to the Alabama River and the hills and valleys associated with those corridors. So the neighborhood principles that are included in the growth strategy and which were also informed by the second survey. Providing a range of housing options that are appropriate to different stages of life and household types in the community, directing new housing investments and reinvestment in both in neighborhoods and underdeveloped areas and designing neighborhoods to meet specific needs of children and older residents. So the growth strategy, as I said, is a very high-level look at the community and how it might develop over time. You see in this graphic, some of the main corridors, both major roads and as well as those potential on and off-street paths for pedestrians and bicyclists as well as your major corridor, major hubs of commercial activity, your gateways, and some key transportation improvements such as that east-west connector on the north side of town. That then was translated into a future land use plan, which we'll see here on the screen. And several of those activity centers are highlighted in this. The categories in the land use plan range from different densities of residential development, very low density to medium density into mixed-use residential, conservation in green space, neighborhood and general commercial, mixed-use commercial, which is very similar to the category that is in the the previous land use plan, like general industrial, institutional. It's important to note that the areas that are shown in the land use plan as institutional are existing. We're not predicting where churches or schools might go in the future or recommended that they go in a particular location. So the institutional land use color on that map is only indicating where they are today. To help elaborate on how the land use plan would affect either new developments or reinvestment in existing areas, we did do pairs of illustrations for three different focus areas around town, including Prattmont around the intersection of Main Street and Memorial, along 31 at Howell where the proposed east-west connector would intersect with Howell. And then at US 82 and 31, South Side, which is an area that is starting to fill in with residential development right now. During the planning process, we had a housing consultant put together a forecast for what would be the market potential for Prattville over the next five years. And their analysis indicated that you have a market potential, this is not a forecast of whether you're going to get this, but the market said that you could get this. Between 1,100 and 1,500 new homes in Prattville over the next five years. That there is a very strong market in the Prattville area for multi-family and that the bulk of the single-family market is typically going to be in smaller lot sizes. And that helped us kind of understand some of the pressure that the city has been seeing in terms of requests for rezoning. And when, once, as we were getting an understanding of that housing forecast, that second survey that we put out included a series of questions to give a sense of what people like and dislike about different types of development. So that to the degree that the city can or is interested in managing development in terms of residential, what would be most important? What do people not like about things that they see being developed or the things that they would like to see happen in new development? And what we heard, of course, is that people want good quality housing, that they are in favor of housing for different life stages. They do want to see open space served as new development occurs. They want the community to be walkable, they want it to be bicycle-friendly. They want to have smooth traffic flow and a general sense of connectivity. That parks should be evenly distributed throughout the community. And the recurring theme was that what people liked about the images in the survey, anything that had some historic character to it, they were more likely to vote for that because that seems to be very, very important to the way that people see Prattville. Is this historic character is something that is a fundamental part of their vision of the community. And so we had about five different categories that we had people vote for different images. You see on the screen the top-ranked images from those five categories. You can see here, everything looks fairly historic, even though some of it is new. And there's also a lot of greenery entries. Compare that to the images they did not like, relatively few trees. Not much historic character. There's a little bit more of a sort of cookie cutter uniformity to many of the images of that course track and cars. That's not the way people view, see for what they want you to be. You see in these images, cars are not a big part of, they occur, I mean, it's fundamental. But in this next set of images, driveways, cars, all of that is kind of a really key part of the way that these places have developed compared to this. So treating how cars are dealt with in terms of development seem to be something that the community picked up on. The last major part of the planning process was to look at facilities and infrastructure. So we looked at several categories, including water, sewer, public works, and utilizing the conversations that we had early on in the process with some key stakeholders, the public works and utilities faults, looking at previous studies the city had done, identify some of the major issues that the city will need to be tackling in the coming years. Did the same thing in terms of parks of recreation and cultural arts, took a lot of the feedback that we got from the surveys and community meetings. Multipurpose center kept coming up, expanding the senior center, some type of cultural performing arts center, which may be, again, something that could be housed with that multipurpose facility. Larger library, new parks in some new growth areas. Acquiring some parkland on the west side and renovating the stadium and continuing to renovate the doctor's center. The kind of highlighting the three parks locations. The two on the east side are areas where there's a lot of residential growth happening right now. It has been happening. The east of Memorial, there are relatively fewer parks compared to the west side. You can see the, those green dots appear quite a lot on the west side. You only have about four on the east where you have so much population growth in the community now. So putting those very large green dots can represent general locations where there may be a need for planting a park in your future. And on the west side, this area because of the extensive floodway area looks like it would be a great place to do a very natural-oriented type park with trails, picnic areas, not necessarily heavily, not necessarily for active recreation, football and soccer fields, but more natural outdoor recreation. Transportation, one of the top projects there, east-west connector on the north side that would connect over from Fairview to 31 in the Howell area. And that would connect across by the way of Gardner to provide access to the middle school, high school, sorry, junior high school and high school. Making some improvements on 31 and 82, including widening 82 on the west of 31. Roundabouts were recommended on north and south of the junior high school and the high school to create a slow school zone area where you would enter into that zone through a roundabout, kind of set the pace for traffic in those areas. Widening Queen Smith, Copsport South. For the intersection between Queen Smith and 31. And a couple of strategic street connections that would help to distribute traffic so that you don't have a lot of traffic on some residential streets. Those are all shown in this graphic here, it's transportation. So you see that route for east-west connector going from Fairview up to 31 at Howell. And then using Howell as an extension of that, acting over to Gardner on the far west side of there. So you get good access over to the junior high school and the high school for the folks who are on the east side of town. A few bicycle pedestrian improvements were recommended. The top recommendation was putting together, to go through the process, studying it in greater detail, putting together a bike head master plan for the city. Because that was an area that people, through the survey and community meetings, put an emphasis on wanting to see greater walkability and bikability. A trail adjacent to that great park was recommended, as well as an off-street path along Pine Creek that would connect roughly from Main Street southward to Memorial. And then continuing your intersection ADA improvements, including bike head facilities whenever any major roads, whenever there's a major investment in a major road, such as US 82 and some of those Queen Smith, widening that. Whenever you have those projects happening, incorporate appropriate level of bike head improvements in that process and then include the same thing when you're building a new major road like that east-west connector. So you begin to create through those off-street trails, like following the streams with on-street networks, create a really integrated network where people can walk and bike from neighborhoods to schools, to parks. Do that, begin to create a much more safely walkable. Still, other facilities included some recommendations for the fire department, including an addition of Fire Station Two, building a fire training center and expanding, we're making some adjustments at Fire Station One, it's a little bit cramped and it's out on the main street, it can be a little bit difficult. In the third survey, we asked, of all of these recommendations, what's the most important? And so amongst those, particularly the capital projects, what we heard from that third survey was people really think it's important to continue to maintain and upgrade water and sewer lines in existing parts of existing neighborhoods and business areas. Making sure that the Atonal Creek wastewater treatment plant is optimized and working effectively. That multipurpose civic center, a larger library, building that east-west connector to alleviate some of the traffic problems, widening US 82, the west side of 31, putting together that bicycle pedestrian plan as an economical way to go about planning future investments in walkability and bikability, and then expanding the fire station number two. And that is the plan that's been put together over the last year. And thank you for your time. If you have any questions, need me to respond to any comments from anybody tonight. Thank you very much.
I'll be ready to go on this call. Any questions? All right. This is a public hearing, Republicans in Congress, come on down and ask me any questions or ask for how we handle other members and if you have any questions. The Republican amendment, if you'd like to pull down from here.
You want to address?
Absolutely.
John Lee Pennington, 11, dear Truist. I had already since started this question when I was reading through the plan and maybe I didn't see it. But Main Street from my memorial up to Tera, where is there any plans to maybe even put in a center turning lane there? Because I've been behind especially during a pot, if you're heading east or west and somebody wants to turn left, traffic, and I don't know from the police department how many rear ends, accidents and all. It's from Memorial heading east to like Tera where the road's, oh, right here where your office is. Yeah, and that one stretch is just four-lane, but there's no center turning lane or anything. So I was after to turn left and I did not see anything in that plan.
And they're just on the front of us, but.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're heading west now toward Memorial, there's nothing, there's no, there's no, there's absolutely nothing and that's a real pain in the ass at times. I just, I looked through it and I just did not, I did not see.
And there might be limitations to keep a rider alive and design of people's properties.
If we're going to continue building and building and building, and that's the main shot into downtown Prattville. And with all the building that's going on now, that main shot should be pretty smooth, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you. I want to address that one. If you want else, come on down.
Mr. Trump, if you'd like, we'll try to open up to more Zoom.
That'd be quick, Mr. Mayor, John Lee, and some of the, is there any knowledge that is there? The type of interest?
Again, the address, we had feasible piping products to gather full use of the right-of-way we have there, but sort of what you're related to is like houses in front yard that would have to be impacted. Obviously, that's the purchase, but there could be, might be a way to heighten the ditches and come up with another one.
Thank you for looking at that. Thank you, sir. Yes, may I, is there any way to get your votes there on Zoom?
Yes, sir, if anyone on Zoom would like to participate, if you hit the raise your hand feature, I hope that it's as quick for me to notice that you would like to speak. So I guess it depends on your setup, but online, if you hit more, you can hit raise your hand. That'll let me know that you want to speak.
All right, we're ready on that. Love to hear you anytime. And I will close this up, hear your question, I'll be in. And move on to what we're going to do next. Is there any discussion, any questions? I think we can do a call question or is that our next call question?
Yes, sir, but in the afternoon public hearing, we'll take Ms. Pennington's comments into consideration, of course. Any other comments we get, if someone wants to email them to me or drop them off or. them to me, or drop them off, or get them to me any way they can, we can incorporate those, or release it to rest now, best we can. And the idea is, was already on next Thursday, planning commission agenda. It's the very last item on the agenda. If you want, if anybody wants to come back, it's the very last, last item. And the project about 24 would be put on the agenda for consideration for adoption.
Okay, so we'll do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There, I'm sorry, there was one thing I did forget to mention. Back in, I guess it was about a month ago, we participated in a workshop, Scott and myself and several others, to talk about potential of the interpretive center or museum, that had talked about the redevelopment process. Several people had mentioned wanting to see that happen. We met with, with a group of people to look at the potential for the R and D building, all the cotton chain company complex being adaptively reused for that purpose. And so it was suggested that we maybe put some language in the plan to address that. And so we have put together a paragraph that we've suggested might be added on to page 17, which we go under the downtown and tourist section of the plan. Scott can, Scott can provide that to you, but that is a, that's a specific language that we suggest adding to that.
I understand what building that is. It's been 20 something years. Which one is that?
It is, there are two buildings sort of uphill from the public safety complex, across the street and uphill from there. That's the R and D building and the cotton house. And those house the engineering and design functions for the gin company. Very interesting. The interiors have a lot of the gin designs, physically speaking, from many years. So it's, I mean, it's all, a lot of it's already there. Very interesting. But so it was looked at, the key recommendation is that we really need to do a feasibility study. They're, for it to be really successful, that it were to happen, you really need to make sure there are really good access between it and downtown. Some things are in the works that would help make that happen. Looks like with the mill project and plant, will help significantly, but then also kind of reiterating how it would fit into an overall tourism strategy for Prattville. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we do have one person on Zoom wants to speak. Just a moment to figure this out.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
My question was, as part of the transportation plan, you are assuming that you can cross the Powell family land, and that they will sell that land or do something with the city? Has that land actually been surveyed for like a feasibility study to do what you want to do, as well as the connector from Fairview to 31? I think it's a great idea, but have you actually looked at the land? Because I think some of that actually goes across swamp land. Thank you.
Thank you.
So like Jason said, we're trying to get this conceptual, I think that north-south connector or the east-west connector, of course, of the southern city is desired. We looked at the Powell Road, most of those. It's not necessarily exactly where it shows on the map, but the concept that we need some way to get from east to west, west to east in that area is what I'm hoping to do.
All right. Any other questions on the Zoom part?
Let me just make sure, did everybody, anyone else wanted to raise their hand on Zoom? It's hard for me to see, but I don't see them all raised hands. Okay, well, ours put their hand up.
Scott, if you want, I can read the questions that were done in the chat. Would that be okay with you?
We can either read them out, or I can just, I'm saving everything, so we can incorporate it kind of into the bits of the public area. It's, it's up to the chair.
Sure. This is sort of the question.
Okay, but I'm not, okay. T. Barnes put in three questions, and she wanted to know, is there a plan to attract and support city businesses? Is there a plan for neighborhood restoration? And is there a plan to create subcommittees or a citizens review board? You want me to keep going?
Sure.
Okay.
Citizens Review Board for planning, that's basically what we are, is the basis. We're all here voluntarily.
Okay, Richard Emanuel put, has a Prattville welcome center been considered? Could it be located below the clock tower at Home Place? Christopher Downing wrote, intersection of Highway 31 and 82, people run the red light constantly. Are there plans for a red light camera or any means to stop this?
That will be a public safety question. I'm not sure if that would be a function of the planning of developments.
And what is being a right turn lane from Cobbs Ford Road onto McQueen Smith? All right. Dr. Gerald Simms, although required every 10 years, there should be a schedule to revise the plan annually. And that's it.
I was, I think there's one, I'll just read the last question I saw. This is, what are the plans for the land between Fire Station Two and Highway 14 on Old Farm Lane? I don't really answer that right now, but that's, that was the last comment I saw. Again, just for everyone in the audience, thank you for your participation. Like I said, we'll, we'll go through all the questions that were received here. Any more that get sent in, we can look at and try to address the best we can, if they're relevant to the conference of plan process prior to next week's meeting. Again, it'll be on the planning commission agenda. It is on the planning commission agenda. It's the last item, so if you come a little bit late, you should be okay. We'll be asking the planning commission to consider adoption, adopting Project Prattville 2040. Then eventually, we'll also send it to the city council for at least acceptance or consideration. A lot of the, a lot of the suggestions in the conference plan are, require money, and of course, the council is the one who approves the budget. So we want them to recognize and understand what's in this. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.